Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I wish to call the Lee County Board of Commissioners meeting on this Monday, 21st of August of 2023. We are now open. Would you please stand with me as we have the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Heavenly Father, in our hearts, we plan our course, but we pray you establish our steps. I pray that we seek you for advice. Let us not make decisions based upon what we know, but let us act based upon your wisdom. Please guide us, Lord. We place this meeting in your hands. We place our hearts and our minds in your hands as well, that you may direct us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Okay, I apologize. We have the agenda in front of us, and I would like to add to the consent agenda, item number two, Uniform. That's two U, and that is the 2023 Chevrolet Tahoe for the sheriff's office, and that won't be coming out of the budget, that will be coming out of drug seizure funds. Now, second item to old business is item 6C, and that's under the Planning Board Recommendations for Rezoning Request. Anything else to add to the agenda?
Consent agenda, can we add seven F?
Say again, please. Seven F, participation in the Central Pines Regional Council Grant Assistance Program. Add that to the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Which one was that?
I'm sorry?
Which one?
Seven F.
Seven F, under new business, sir.
I wanted to have a question on that one.
Pull it. Okay. So we'll leave seven F on the new business.
And just to note, under the consent agenda, the occupational health agreement, we did receive that today. It's at your desk, and it's also been attached and posted online this early afternoon.
Which item is that, please?
Um...
Is that two J?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, Wellness Clinic contract.
To avoid pulling it, I'll be glad to ask the question I have on it right now.
I don't mind.
Oh, all right.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other additions or changes to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the agenda as amended with two U being added to the consent agenda and six C to old business. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And can I get an approval for the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, it is my honor, we have a proclamation honoring the Lee County gymnastics team. This is a proclamation recognizing the achievements of the Lee County gymnastics team, and I believe they're all here.
Most of them.
Most of them. Whereas, the Lee County gymnastics team exhibited hard work, dedication, and exceptional talent in their recent competitions and throughout the 2023 season. And whereas, thirteen gymnasts representing Lee County and competed in the AAU National Championships in Orlando, Florida, along June 23rd, excuse me, June 30th to July 3rd, with 3,000 gymnasts from across the country. And whereas, during this competition, the Lee County gymnasts received six gold, six silver, and nine bronze medals, along with two national champions who received first place in the all-around event division, one of which received a plaque and a pin for being the highest-scoring gold in their session. And whereas, earlier in the season, the Lee County gymnastics team attended the AAU State Championship in Hickory, North Carolina, on May 6th through the 7th, facing over 1,000 fierce competitors at the highest division and levels. And whereas, the Lee County gymnasts were successful and brought home their highest scores of the season, resulting in the crowning of many state champions, including six gold medalists, eleven silver medalists, and ten bronze medalists, as well as all-around gold medalists, who also achieved gold on the bars, beam, and floor events, and silver on the vault event. And whereas, on March 25th through the 26th, the Lee County gymnastics team sent twenty-five gymnasts to the AAU qualifier competition in Lake Norman, North Carolina, during which the gymnasts received nineteen first-placed event medals in total from the vault, bars, beam, and floor events, as well as four gymnasts who received first place in the all-around event competition for having the highest all-around score in their division. And in response to the gymnasts' hard work, five of the gymnasts achieved an all-around score exceeding thirty-seven, which advanced them to the elite division. And whereas, the Lee County gymnastic team was victorious in their endeavors, held the values and morals of Lee County above all else, displayed grace in victory and dignity in defeat, and embodied the true meaning of teamwork and sportsmanship, which will carry them to success in future seasons and in life. And now therefore, the Lee County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023, is Lee County Gymnastics Team Day in Lee County, North Carolina, and call upon the residents to observe this day, recognizing and celebrating the team and their contributions to and successes shared with the Lee County community presented this 21st day of August We do have a few words from...
Go ahead, sir. So I just want to say how proud I am of these girls. They have done a great job, and I want to say how grateful the county is for having a great coach like Kristi. Kristi pours her heart and soul into gymnastics, and the girls sitting back here with all these medals, it starts with Kristi and then it ends with the girls, because they're out there with the same motivation that Kristi has. So I'm glad that we're going to these tournaments and we're showing that competition that Lee County is all about, but also having our character in place to, having got one phone call from these tournaments about Lee County being a problem, because Kristi's there making sure that we are representing the county in a very respectful way. So grateful for Kristi, grateful for the parents. The parents have to drive the kids two, three, four days a week to our new facility, and without the parents getting the kids there, we wouldn't have got the medals that we got. So grateful for the parents and excited for the upcoming season. Thank you, Kristi.
Thank you, Joseph. Do I have a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the proclamation recognizing the achievements of the Lee County gymnastics team. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, on behest of Joseph and Kristi and the board chair, everybody come on around here.
All of the participants on the team, y'all coming up here for a group photo.
I was discussing with Mr. Keel to have them stay for the entire meeting so that they could see how government operates, but they do have school tomorrow, so please make sure you do your homework and study hard. We want an academic performance as well. Is Ms. Benitez here? Oh, come on over here. This is the fun part of the job. We have a proclamation honoring Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas, National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated nationwide from September 15th through October 15th each year. The observation began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson, and expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover the month as it is celebrated today. It calls upon public officials, educators, librarians, and all of the people of the United States to observe this time with ceremonies, activities, and programs. And whereas, since the 16th century, North Carolina saw Spanish explorers by the name of Lucas Vasquez de Leon, Hernando de Soto, Domingo Fernandez, Pedro Don Corones, Captain Juan Pardo, and Sergeant Hernando Boiano, leaving a long Hispanic legacy on our state. And whereas, September 15th is significant because it is the anniversary of the independence of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Brazil, Mexico, Chile, Belize celebrate their Independence Day on September 7th, 16th, 18th, and 21st respectfully. Therefore, the observance of the National Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the culture and traditions of people whose ancestry can be traced to Spain, Mexico, Central America, South America, and the Caribbean Islands. And whereas, during 2020, the U.S. Census Bureau counted 1,300 and, excuse me, 1,13,122 Hispanic residents in Lee County out of a population of 63,285 people, where about 20.7% of the county's residents identify as Hispanic and Latino. And whereas, Lee County recognizes the unique and vital role of our Hispanic and Latino residents play in the fabric of our economy and workforce, as well as our faith communities and social tapestry. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Lee County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month in Lee County, and urges its residents to enjoy this cultural celebration, presented this 21st day of August 2023.
My name is Hanya Benitez. I am deputy director for the Hispanic Liaison's Lee County Office. We are a nonprofit dedicated to foster intercultural understanding and empower Hispanic Latinos in our community to overcome the challenges they face and make their voices heard in the community. To my understanding, this is the first of its kind in Lee County, and to say that we're overjoyed, that's just something small there. I do want to recognize with me today, we have several nonprofit leaders, we have business leaders, community members that are here with me today and that are overjoyed to be here and witness this very important moment in Lee County. We also encourage you and members of the audience of the community, there will be upcoming opportunities to be able to enjoy. I have members of our team that have some flyers. In downtown Siler City, there will be Hispanic Heritage Fiesta, which Hispanic Liaison hosts. It is one of the largest festivals honoring Hispanic heritage, where in the past we've seen over 5,000 attendees. So definitely encourage you to stop by in downtown Siler City. That will be on Saturday, September 16th, from 12 to 6:00. Additionally, in downtown Sanford, on Saturday, October 14th, there will be the Festival Latino in the Downtown Street Fest. So definitely encourage you and your family to come out and enjoy with your, within the community. Honoring also our heritage, if I may, because we have community members that solely speak Spanish, I would just like to summarize what I have said today. Comisionados del Condado Lee, estamos agradecidos por esta oportunidad de poder presenciar un momento histórico en este condado. De lo que tenemos entendido, esta es la primera proclamación de herencia, honrando a la herencia hispana. Es un gran gozo para nosotros. Conmigo hay líderes de agencias sin fines de lucro, de negocios, miembros de la comunidad que junto conmigo tienen esta alegría de poder compartir este momento. Damos el anuncio que van a haber oportunidades para que podamos celebrar la cultura hispana latina el sábado 16 de septiembre. El vínculo hispano va a tener la fiesta de herencia hispana en el centro de Siler City de mediodía a seis. Y también aquí en Sanford, en el festival del centro de Sanford va a ver el festival latino el sábado 14 de octubre. Animamos a los comisionados que puedan acompañarnos con sus familiares para disfrutar estas oportunidades. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the resolution recognizing the proclamation honoring Hispanic Heritage Month. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Ms. Benitez, would you like to have your various individuals come up? We're going to have a photograph together, and so I hate to say this, Commissioners, get y'all to make that track again. I did ask Mrs. Benitez to get us flyers on all those dates she gave us coming up. So we do thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding the UDO text amendment.
Mr. Chair, would this be the time for me to sit this one out?
I have a motion to recuse Commissioner Sharp for this hearing as far as participating and voting. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I do need the, I thought I had it here, Amy, I apologize. Does anybody here have a conflict of interest with anything regarding the UDO?
No.
Okay, thank you. I now open the public hearing for the UDO text amendment after...
Good evening, Commissioners, Planning Board members, staff, and citizens. This information is on pages 208 through 210 of the Commissioners' Agenda Packet, and staff was instructed to draft this proposed revision to the UDO sign regulations by the Lee County Planning Board. It was prompted by the denial of a sign variance by the Lee County Board of Adjustment for a church requesting to replace an existing monument sign with a new internally illuminated monument sign. The standards for variance were not met, in other words, the church was not able to prove that they had a hardship per state law, but the Board of Adjustment felt that allowing internally illuminated signage by right, along with changeable copy, for a church in a residential zoning district was reasonable. Therefore, they asked that the Planning Board consider recommending this change to the signage regulations. The Planning Board agreed that this was a reasonable amendment and instructed staff to draft the proposed revision to the UDO sign regulations for consideration by the Joint Planning Commission. The Joint Planning Commission then reviewed the information and directed staff to move forward with allowing the Commissioners to consider this request via the public hearing process. The proposed revision would amend Article 11 sign regulations to allow internal illumination and changeable copy for non-residential uses that are allowed in the residential zoning districts. There are existing development standards in other sections of Article 11 that regulate permanent signage with regard to the uses allowed to have signage, the maximum number of signs allowed on a property, the types of signs allowed, the maximum height, et cetera, which would still be applicable for signage. This amendment simply allows signs within the zoning districts listed to have two characteristics that they are not currently allowed to have, and that's internal illumination and changeable copy. For your reference, the residential agricultural and the residential restricted zoning districts are the residential zoning districts typically found within Lee County. And once again, this would simply allow non-residential uses that are permitted in residential zoning districts, for example churches, which are permitted in all zoning districts, to have internally illuminated signage that also has changeable copy. So it would be like the electronic reader board signage that you see. That's what this text amendment would allow churches to have. Are there any questions?
Questions for Amy. Commissioner Carver?
No questions.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
I think the only question I had you answered, and it was non-residential, not having, like, they're not able to do a illuminated copy sign on their property, correct?
There are very, correct. There are very few non-residential uses that are allowed in residential zoning districts, but by specifically saying non-residential uses, it would eliminate things like subdivision entrance signs for residential communities from being able to have those electronic board signs.
That was, yeah. Okay. All right, then you answered it. Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Sharp, I know you can't vote, but you can ask questions.
No, I don't have any.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. The public hearing is now open. Are those, anyone in favor of the modification of the Uniform Development Ordinance on behalf of this change? Wish to speak on behalf? Anyone wish to speak opposing it? Going once, going twice. Public hearing is now closed. Thank you very much. Do we need to excuse the board?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I do want to say thank you to the board for your time and efforts, and I do know that Walter Ferguson and I have had a busy July meeting, so keep it up, Walter. Next item up for a public hearing is public hearing for Project Stronghold, and... Yes, sir. Go.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jimmy Randolph. I'm CEO of the Sanford Area Growth Alliance, and I will introduce this topic tonight for public hearing. In the public hearing notice published in the Sanford Herald, the Lee County Board of Commissioners proposes to participate in the cost of an economic development project referred to as Project Stronghold. Project Stronghold is a Fortune 500 global manufacturing company, an equipment manufacturing project for a division of this company specifically is being referred to as Project Stronghold. The board is proposing to participate in the cost of the project, which consists of purchase and outfit of an existing industrial building and the purchase of machinery and equipment of up to $56 million in taxable investment in Sanford, Lee County, North Carolina, with Lee County sharing up to $570,960 of the cost of the project, with revenues from the county's general fund over the five-year life of the project. The project is necessary to preserve local jobs and benefits with an average annual wage of at least $49,670 over the five-year length of the project. It is believed this project will stimulate the local economy, promote additional business activity, preserve jobs, and maintain payroll in Lee County. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time. Mr. Chair?
Questions for Mr. Jimmy. Commissioner Sharp, start with you.
Not at this time.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
I can't get it to pull up, but where is it located?
We're not divulging the specific location of the project at this point, but they are considering moving into an existing manufacturing facility that has been vacated by another employer here in Lee County.
Okay.
And it might not be that difficult to figure out, you know, where that is located, but it is a significant vacant facility here in Lee County that they're proposing to locate in.
Okay. And then...
Okay, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions.
Commissioner Carver?
Will there be any expectation that the number of jobs that they currently are employing would be maintained?
Absolutely, that is a critical part of the agreement. The preservation of their existing jobs would be a critical part of that, and in trying to maintain the confidentiality of the potential project at this time, I haven't referred to it in those specific terms, but essentially, any employees that are currently employed by this company in Lee County would have to be preserved in order to qualify for any of these incentives.
Can you help me distinguish between someone else that wants to move and have an improvement in their job situation? What criteria would we use to determine whether or not they could get incentive also, somebody that's already in Lee County?
Absolutely, and in this case, because it's not that complicated to connect these dots, this is an existing employer in Lee County, Project Stronghold, and the opportunity that they have as a global manufacturer is to potentially locate this project anywhere in the world. And if they were to locate this particular project elsewhere, it could potentially result in a change in headcount here in Lee County, it could impact us here. So at Saga, as we entered into a conversation with this company about those eventualities, our goal, of course, was to protect the jobs that are here in Lee County. The efficiencies that could be gained through automation and other investments in machinery and equipment and a new facility here in Lee County could potentially protect the jobs of the existing employees here and prevent a business decision that might cause either a reduction in headcount here or relocation of those jobs to another place. So in any instance where that were a situation facing an existing industry, we would hope that they would approach us about that and have a conversation like the one we've had with Project Stronghold along those very same lines, because the existing employment base that we have in here, the good jobs that Lee County residents currently are enjoying with local employers, we see that as as critical or more critical a part of our job at Saga is to retain those existing jobs as it is to attract new jobs.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Jimmy? I now open the public hearing on Project Stronghold. Anyone wishing to speak on behalf of it, please come forward. Please express your name and your address, sir.
My name is Jimmy Randolph, I reside at 3405 Windmere Drive here in Sanford, North Carolina, in Lee County, and I would like to strongly encourage the Commissioners to consider approving this incentive. The company is considering a plan that would increase their production levels and efficiencies for one of their key projects, their key products. The company has spoken with Saga in the past about challenges finding employees here in the community, and we know that we are facing fairly low unemployment levels and a fairly high level of employment. The workforce situation being what it is, we believe that when a company can identify ways to invest in automation and more efficient processes and preserve the jobs that are already here, that is an endeavor that we would greatly like to support. The company's analyzing their US manufacturing footprint to determine which facility they currently have could provide the best ROI for this proposed investment, or if there are alternatives elsewhere, and one potential option is the purchase of a facility right here in Lee County. They would propose to invest approximately $56 million over five years, $24 million of that in business personal property, $32 million in real property, purchase and outfit of the building. Although there are not currently any proposed increases in headcount, we believe this project would allow for the protection of the existing employment here in Lee County. The proposed incentive is performance-based, and therefore builds in protection for the taxpayers. If the company does not make the substantial increase in their taxable property here in Lee County and maintain their current employment levels, then they would not be eligible for the incentive. So we would encourage you strongly to support this incentive for Project Stronghold.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else opposed? Anyone else for wishes to speak? Anyone else opposed? Going once, going twice. Public hearing is now closed. We don't have anything for public comments, I do want to go with old business, and I do want to take the prerogative of moving the Planning Board recommendations for a rezoning request so that Amy can get off and supervise the Planning Board. So please, we're going to move you up, Amy, I apologize, we didn't catch that.
Thank you.
And we're doing items 6C.
Thank you, and just so you know, I do have David Montgomery with the Planning Board right now, so they are not on their own.
Okay, they're not unsupervised, okay, good, thank you.
All right, so good evening again, everyone, this information is on pages 252 through 263 of your Agenda Packet. The Planning Board met on July 24th after the public hearing was held and recommended that the Commissioners approve the request to rezone 8.95 acre portion of a vacant 9.95 acre tract of land addressed as 2917 Airport Road from Sanford Soccer Field Complex Conditional Zoning District to Light Industrial Zoning District to allow, I'm sorry, to allow the development of the site in an industrial manner. The one acre balance is within the city's ETJ and is not included within this rezoning request. Topics of discussion included that there was no opposition to this request and that the proposed land use could be good for the local school system and local economy. The Board acknowledged by unanimous vote that the rezoning request is consistent with the Plan San Lee Long Range Plan designation of professional and institutional campus because the district is supportive of commercial uses and employment uses. As a reminder, the Commissioners should make two votes regarding this matter. Sample motions are provided for your reference. Commissioners are always welcome to draft a unique motion if preferred, and the Commissioners may acknowledge that the zoning map amendment is not consistent with the Plan San Lee Long Range Plan and still vote to approve the request. Are there any questions?
Questions for Amy. Commissioner Carver?
No questions.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
Just one, they are, the company trying to rezone it owns the whole acreage, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not like this is going to get rezoned and then there, that one acre in the, could be something completely different.
No, ma'am, it's one legal lot, one parcel.
Perfect, okay.
There's simply, the strip there that is the one acre is going to serve as the buffer between the residential and the new commercial development if it's rezoned. So instead of putting them through two public hearing processes, they're going to leave it as a buffer, they're just opting to go in front of Lee County and get the majority of the site rezoned.
And then when it came to inviting people I know at the other, the public hearing earlier wasn't able to be here for, were you able to, were they required to send notices to anyone to come to it?
With regard to the public hearing, yes, staff notified all adjoining property loan owners as per state law.
Okay.
So even the people on the other side of that one acre.
I was just worried with that one, okay.
Since that's still part of the legal lot, everyone all the way around got notified.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
None.
Commissioner Sharp?
None.
Okay. We have three options of a motion to determine if it is or is not.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion, option number one. I'd like the motion that proposes the zoning map is consistent with the Plan San Lee.
Motion's been made to propose the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the Plan San Lee Long Range Plan designation of professional and institutional campus because this district is supportive of commercial uses and employment uses. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, we need to make a motion regarding the rezoning.
Chair, make a motion. Oh, that we approve the proposed land zoning.
Motion number one?
Yes, sir.
Motion's been made to approve the proposed zoning map amendment because the site is appropriate for light industrial uses. It also appears to be reasonably in the public interest because of the site adjoins a light industrial zone property and is located off a dead-end public street that terminates into the Emergency Services Training Center for the local community college. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, we need to make a motion regarding the rezoning.
Chair, make a motion. Oh, that we approve the proposed land zoning.
Motion number one?
Yes, sir.
Motion's been made to approve the proposed zoning map amendment because the site is appropriate for light industrial uses. It also appears to be reasonably in the public interest because of the site adjoins a light industrial zone property and is located off a dead-end public street that terminates into the Emergency Services Training Center for the local community college. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Now, you can get back and supervise David. And I do apologize, we'll... All right, next item on the agenda is approval of resolution providing for the sale and issuance of $25 million general obligation Parks and Recreation Bond Series 2023. I skipped something, I'm sorry.
Just amended animal services?
Amended Animal Services Ordinance, thank you.
Yes, sir, I'll take that one. This, the first reading was on the July 24th meeting. Once the Board consolidated human services into the Human Services Agency, we had to update the ordinance where it referenced the Board of Health in reference to dangerous animals. There was two references to the Board of Health, they have been corrected, to reference the Consolidated Human Services Agency Board. This is on for a second reading and asks the Board to approve, and we will send some UNICOD to get on the website.
Questions for Whitney. Commissioner Sharp?
None.
Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
No questions.
No questions. Do I have a motion to approve the amended animal sort?
Don't move.
Motion's been made to approve the amended animal services ordinance, and this being the second reading, we move to approve the changes. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, I apologize for botching up my agenda in front of me. Next item again is the approval of the resolution providing for the sale and issuance of the $25 million general obligation Parks and Recreation Bonds Series 2023, and it is a very lengthy resolution, it was fun reading.
Good evening. Our Parks and Recreation General Obligation Bonds are going to sale on September 19th, 2023. Before the sale, the Board needs to approve the resolution to provide for the sale and issuance of these bonds. The resolution reads as follows, "Resolution Providing for the Sale and Issuance of $25 Million General Obligation Parks and Recreation Bonds Series 2023."
Questions for Mrs. Seisman. Commissioner Carver?
No questions.
Commissioner Lovick?
No, sir, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
No questions, move to approve.
Commissioner Sharp?
No questions.
Motion's been made to approve the resolution providing for the sale and issuance of the $25 million general obligation Parks and Recreation Bonds Series 2023. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Aye. Trust me, I've got to tell my son and my grandchildren who are fanatics and soccer. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seisman. Under new business, we have a request to appear before the Board, Jean Emma Epperson. Emma, I saw you earlier, good to see you this evening. For those of you that don't recall, Emma is one of our young Commissioners, she's also going to be at the North Carolina Association County Commissioners, and we're going to have breakfast on Saturday morning, yes?
Yes.
Very good.
Good evening, I want to thank you for having me here tonight. I am Jean Epperson, though some may know me as Emma. I will be representing as our county's youth voice delegate at the NCACC Annual Conference on behalf of the, and on behalf of the NCACC, I invite you to come to the Saturday morning Youth Involved Breakfast on August 26th. On top of being a young Commissioner, I am also currently a senior at Lee Early College. Because of this, I would also like to take time to discuss the importance of expanding LEC. I love my school, I love the environment we have created for ourselves. However, we are located in a small trailer with numerous safety concerns, and we are only able to accept a small number of students per year. The only level of security we have from an unknown person coming inside are a couple of security guards scattered around the college campus. Even then, our walls are thin and easy to pierce through. If there were to be a tornado, we would have to exit the school and we would have to take shelter in a nearby building. These kinds of things factor in students leaving the county or going to a charter school. Every time this happens, the county loses thousands of dollars. However, if we focus on expanding LEC while allowing us to keep our charm, we can hire more teachers and in return have more students and students that continue to stay in our school system. Not only would this result in keeping money in our school system, students would feel more cared about and seen, improving the crisis amongst mental health in teens. Thank you again for having me tonight, and I hope you take my words into consideration.
Thank you, Emma. Questions for Emma? Commissioner Carver?
No questions but a comment, I really appreciate you coming, and I hope that some of your classmates will be observing your willingness to share with us. Unfortunately, sometimes we get the, give the impression that we're not interested in what younger people feel, but in fact, I think someday you're going to be paying our social security, so you're important, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
Just another comment, thank you for coming tonight, your comments are very true, and I would very much like to see you as Lee Early College and more of our local public schools in more secure buildings, and I totally agree with your comments tonight, and thank you for coming and presenting.
Thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thanks for coming, I think we, what's the, don't we have a status of moving them into the, one of the buildings once the Moore Center gets opened up?
As we have...
So that's already in the works, all right, so just so you, in case you didn't know, now do we know the exact number of kids that'll be able to be available when we open that up?
I do not.
Emma, have they shared with you that we are planning on moving everyone out of the Wilkinson Building? We've got to convert that, upgrade it, so that that will be the solid building for Lee Early College. Are you aware of that plan?
I've heard talk of it, but my school has told me that, we've heard talk of it for years, so I don't know how like urgent it is.
You do know the government moves at a snail's pace.
Yeah.
But we've known this for now, what, two years we've owned the building, and the transition from moving everybody out of the library so the library can be expanded, and to move everybody out of the Wilkinson Hall so that we can upgrade that for Lee Early College as a physical building. So it is in the plans, it is in the works, and I wish Dr. Chapman was here to help me. But it is in the plan, I do apologize for not making it go faster, but we're talking about federal, we're talking about state government, and we've already made our contribution as far as the county's concerned by purchasing the Moore Center and upgrading some of the facilities there. But we're working on it, I know you're going to be graduating, but you can come back here as a teacher and go to Lee Early College in their new building and teach. That's an incentive.
So the main thing, it's in the works, it's, we have our plans.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Vorbeck, I took a...
Thank you for coming and speaking, and gentle reminders are never a bad thing, and I will see you at breakfast on Saturday.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
Congratulations, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Sharp?
Yes, thank you for coming, and you're very well spoken.
I, I'm sorry, Commissioner Vorbeck, I took a-
Thank you for coming and speaking, and gentle reminders are never a bad thing, and I will see you at breakfast on Saturday.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
Congratulations, and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Sharp?
Yes. Thank you for coming, and you're very well spoken, and I hope we can meet the needs of Lee Early College. Not while you're here, but hopefully it'll be soon after, when you're going to college.
I want to at least try to put in the effort to leave this place a better place than when I was there. So even if I don't get to benefit from it, it makes me happy that other people will.
That's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. And again, patience, and when you do come back, we'll have that sports complex up too.
(laughing).
So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, oh wow, it's sports complex road names. Who wants this one?
I guess Brandon's taking it and Joseph together.
Evening, Commissioners. Brandon Key with Lee County, work in Development Services. I do see the slide up. I'd like to present the sports complex road names for your approval tonight. These names have been through the Parks and Rec Commission and approved for your recommendation. There's two main, there's two roads, one main road being the one highlighted in blue. Recommendation is Champion Road, and you can see the secondary one coming off, going down to the lower soccer fields. That is recommended for Winners Lane. I'll take any questions.
Now, this is for DOT, just so we get things moving, but these are always for sale for change, correct?
I'm sorry?
These are always up for sale if anybody wants to donate naming rights, correct?
That is in the work. Ms. Lisa could probably answer that better than I.
Yes, we can change the names. I verified that with everybody that we could change the names if we get somebody who wants to buy the rights to name those.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Reeves?
No questions.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
None.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
None.
Commissioner Carver?
None.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joseph's coming up.
Just coming for the next item.
Oh, next item. Okay, you're getting ahead of us. Slow down. All right. Motion's been made to approve Champion Road identified in the blue road on the map and Winners Lane identified as a red road on the map for the names of the two roads running through the sports complex. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Moving right along. Now Joseph is up. Next item is the Project 6120 OT Sloan Park Accessibility Project Design RFQ Award Recommendation.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Chair. On July 20th, an RFQ opening was held for project number 61200124 OT Sloan Park Accessibility Project Design Services. Three sealed qualifications from a variety of companies from across the region were received. Three companies including RVE, Benish, and Withers and Ravenel. These proposals were reviewed using six factors from selections as described in the RFQ notice. The committee that consisted of six county staff members from three different departments looked that over, and we are here to recommend Withers and Ravenel as the landscape architect and design firm for the OT Sloan Park Accessibility Project.
Questions for Joseph. Commissioner Carver?
None.
Commissioner Lovick?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
No questions.
Commissioner Sharp?
None.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been made to request Withers and Ravenel be awarded the Project 6120-01-24, the OT Sloan Park Accessibility Project Landscape and Design Services. And just a, an import, I did get a letter from the governor congratulating us on this award, so I just wanted to share that with you. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is 7D, and it is approve the Woolard Road as surplus and set the minimum bid.
Yes, that's mine. So the county owns property located at 573 Woolard Road. The PIN number is 8694727292. We don't normally bring these to the board to set the minimum bid, however, we've received lots of inquiries on this property throughout the probably year, year and a half, and we're ready to now move on it. The taxable value is $28,000, and the amount that is owed on the property is $26,738.50. There is a structure located on the property, and just due to the amount of inquiries and the amount that's owed on the property, we are asking for the board to adopt the resolution declaring it surplus, surplus, and then setting that minimum bid requirement for what's owed on the property, and then we can move forward on it.
Questions for Whitney. Commissioner Sharp?
None.
Commissioner Reeves?
No, but I'd like the starting bid.
I'm sorry?
Well, I just said no, I don't have any question. I like the starting bid.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
Is there a reason it can't start at 28?
We just thought that if we start with what's actually owed on it, it would be fair to all of the individuals.
I just, if you've got a lot, if you've got a lot of interest, I mean-
I don't know how much they'll pay. I don't know.
I think she's saving a lot of people time and where to start, you know what I mean? People just start low, and everybody just keeps going, so I think this just speeds up the time.
But if you're, yeah, but-
I know you like round numbers.
I do like round numbers. But also, I just mean, if you've had multiple inquiries, why not set it at the 28 at what it's, what it is, and then if you can't afford it, you already knock those people out.
It's a decision by the board. We typically tell people-
Do you wish to change the amount?
You can make a motion. You tell me you like. I'll do that.
Commissioner Reeves?
Are you still using the 10%?
Well, we, they, when they come in, they have to put a 5% bid deposit, and when we tell-
I mean, the upset bid amount-
Yes, we'll still go through the upset bid process, correct?
It'll get there. It'll get there on its own.
Right, because people may upset and then price may be higher.
Goes up 10% every time the upset bid.
So 20, I know, but if you start at 28, 10% of that is more than if you start at 26.
Mm-hmm, it is.
We typically tell people when they call and inquire about it, we'll let them know what, what is owed on the property, and that's really typically like where we, where we like to stay starting off, but it's up to the board.
Oh, all righty.
Okay. Moving on. Commissioner Connect?
Okay.
You're good. Commissioner Lovick?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
You're welcome.
Okay. Do I have a motion to-
Move to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the Woolard Road as surplus and set the minimum bid at $26,738.50. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving right along. Next item is the naming rights and sponsorship policies. And Ben McLeary?
Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, I bring to you a proposed sponsorship policy upon request from the board. There's been interest to possibly put some county facilities up for possible sponsorship and offer naming rights as part of said sponsorship deal. That is why naming rights have been incorporated into this sponsorship policy instead of breaking it out into its own individual, but it's part of it. This policy was crafted using guidance published from the School of Government and utilizing various other policies that existed around the state. So it certainly emulates a lot of other adopted policies. I can answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Ben. Commissioner Carver?
No question.
Commissioner Lovick?
Were you able to find any, for example, Holly Springs Field Ting? Were you able to find out how much sponsors are willing to put into those names?
Yes, I, I did reach out to the Holly Springs management that did that deal. I forget the exact number, but it was around $175,000 a year for a three-year deal that they've re-upped twice now.
What, what was that for? I'm sorry.
For the Ting Park.
The Ting.
Yeah, like the name in the facility.
Aren't they putting some lines here in Lee County?
Yes.
Do, what was that, sorry?
They are.
Isn't Ting putting some lines in Lee County?
And we, and we do have a property to use.
And we have already had at least one discussion with them that we would have a park coming online also when we met with Ting, and we will be reaching out to them once we get this policy, and the next meeting, we intend to bring the brochure that Ben's been working on, along with proposed sponsorship contracts for your approval if, and the policy back if you don't approve the policy tonight.
And ideally, we would put something together for the sports complex and also the new library. Those are the two facilities that we're focusing on.
Thank you.
Now, would that be something, there'd be a bidding process if you, how, how would you put it out there for sponsorship?
It's not necessarily a bidding process, but if we advertise it and if we happen to have multiple submissions at once, there is a, a part in the policy that says that it's just a time-based whoever submits first, because it's not necess, it's not meant to necessarily be a bidding, and there's just a set price for everything we're gonna advertise.
I mean, so can we set a price?
Yes, we'll be bringing that back to you in September.
Okay, gotcha.
What we think we should possibly start with, and then we'll see how that goes, and-
Right.
If it works, great, if not, we may adjust it.
Because I can see where if you didn't set something, it could be a bidding type more.
And, and certain very large things can be negotiated versus a set price, like a overall naming rights, not if you wanted to go there or not, but that certainly would be something that was negotiated rather than having a set price.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
I know, I see some of the timeframes for like the logos and stuff, but as far as the names for the park, like the Champion Way and Winners Lane, how long do the individuals sponsor that? Like, what's the term on that? I guess I should-
So my initial, what we have in here is for naming rights, it has to be a minimum of a 10-year contract, just due to having signage.
But that'll apply to roads? I just feel like those would have like a, because aren't you-
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have anything in specific for roads in here. That's something that we could add on at a later date, but it does have a max 20-year contract length, and then for just like presenting sponsorship versus a naming rights, those are a minimum of a five-year contract from what we have in here.
Okay.
Yep. And then also, that's with the 20-year.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
I just want to add, the board, we're not acting on this tonight, are we?
No.
Okay. And the other thing, under these sponsorship, are you going to treat them like rental property, or how are you going to handle that? Or have you got there far yet?
When you, when you ask if we're going to treat them like rental property, sponsorship in campuses is several different things. Again, somebody wants to put a name on a bench.
Yeah.
That would be for a certain amount of time, and we would have to go out and change those out if, you know, after that three-year period or whatever it is.
Right.
Obviously, sponsorship of baseball teams are different. Those change per season.
Right.
And things. So, does that answer your question, or is more specific?
Kind of sort of. So you're getting all your money upfront for the three years that you might have the name, or is it annually, or?
We would have to, look, we could draft that into the agreement, but I would prefer to get it upfront.
Well, yeah, I would too, so just add that in if you will.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Some of the more major, the larger sponsorships, we might have to agree to divide it up just to be able to get those, but we can take a look at that and see how some others have done it too.
Yeah, based on research around the state, like anything below like $50,000, you would see typically offered up in terms of a contract, an agreed-upon annual amount. But yeah.
Commissioner Sharp, questions?
I did, I did have one more question, sorry.
Yes.
And I may be putting the cart before the horse, but on one of the, um, talking about, right now, I can't find it, in talking about what, like, the primary business function, so would this be something that we put in place and then say if there was, like, because one of them was talking about alcohol use and that sort of thing, so if the sports complex, the bigger thing becomes available and say it be, it starts to sell some type of alcohol, or is this going to get amended to potentially? Again, cart before the horse.
The current version that is before you tonight does not have the alcohol portion in it.
Okay.
That was taken out.
It's not in here? Oh, sorry.
Hold on one second. The one that's actually in your agenda package does not allow for alcohol or firearms. You have a proposed potential change at your spot that took out those two because we had had some comments.
That's why I couldn't find it.
Yeah. So, yeah, we've modified in the one that's laying at your desk-
Got it.
-5.3 to remove the alcohol and the firearms, so we'll need, you know, we can bring whichever one you want back with additional modifications at the next meeting, but we had taken those out based on some comments we had received.
But in the future, you can always amend or waive or modify the policy.
And you have, up to certain points, you have final say-so on what naming right, and you know what sponsorships and names are given. Now, typical team sponsorships would be at the recreation level for that, but they will be following your rules if you set those out.
Yeah, and anything, so the way that it's split up, there's naming rights and there's sponsorship, naming rights are only going to be for the premier amenities, the big-ticket items, and if there's anything that's an offer for that, you will vote on it. Below, if it's not a naming right, if it's a low-level sponsorship, it will not have to come to you.
Can I ask a question? If, if we get a name that's suggested that doesn't reflect well on Lee County or whatever, can we say, "I'm sorry," even though you're the number one bidder?
Yep, there's a specific thing in here that it has to reflect well on Lee County, and if anything happens in the future that ends up going against something, then you can vote to end that contract.
Thank you.
Question, Ben, and this might be for Lisa as well. Have you brought this before the Parks and Rec Commission?
I have not.
Did you, Commissioner Sharp, was there any discussion on the Parks and Rec Commission on this? I-
In general, about doing sponsorships and things like he's talking about, but not in detail like he's broke it down.
Okay.
We can get it to them.
I think that was kind of going to be the next step. You know, we wanted to get an overarching policy, and then we were going to start diving into the specifics.
Mr. Chair, I would go ahead and request that we do talk about that at our next Parks and Rec meeting.
We're not going to, we're not going to ask for an approval tonight, so we're going to work on that.
Okay.
Any further questions?
We'll also get it to the Library Board of Trustees.
Yep, that's right. They've got two, two different nerves.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben. Thank you. A lot of work put into that. Thank you. Thank you, Ben. Thank you. A lot of work put into that. Very good. Next item on the agenda is our participation in the Central Pines Regional Council Grant Assistance Program.
Yes, sir. Um, I'll take this. Um, Commissioner Carver brought this to our attention last fiscal year and it was included in the budget process and it is in agreement with the Central Pines Regional Council for $20,000 for grant assist, for a grant assistance program. But we wanted to bring it to the board for full, um, approval. They would, for that $20,000, you can see a list here of what they will be doing, having talked to Lindsay Whitson with the council, and talking to her and trying to get a grasp on exactly what they would be doing. They maintain a database of grants that are available and they will come in and train staff here, um, on how to access that database and to search it. And we will be using our intern, um, that's in finance to help us with the departments with that. And then if we find grants that we choose to apply for, they will help us write the grants. But there will still be a lot of involvement needed from our staff because, of course, the council doesn't know everything about us and all the ins and outs of Lee County, so they would need our assistance there. If we receive a grant, um, and need their assistance from grant administration of that program, then that would be an additional fee above and beyond the $20,000. So just want to make sure that the board fully is aware of what is, um, happening. Is a automatic renewal agreement, we have to cancel, I've worked out with them that we can notify them by May 31st if we want to cancel each year, um, if we want to stay in the, you know, whether or not we want to stay in the program and stuff, so.
Questions for Lisa. Commissioner Sharp?
I don't have any.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yeah, this is the one I wanted to, I'm not, still not clear on exactly what it is they're gonna do. We're paying them 20,000 to research grants and then if we secure a grant, we gotta pay them additional money for any support staff they, we use?
Right. Um, so they would help us write the grants as part of the 20,000 and submit those grants.
Yeah.
But if we are awarded a grant and it takes, kind of like the historic courthouse grant that we have, we are paying this council for helping us to administer that grant. Now, it could be a straight enough grant that's, you know, purchased for one thing that we could handle ourselves, but if it's a, you know, larger grant or a capital project grant, then you may end up needing a grant administrator and they would charge us an additional fee to do that role. But the 20,000 would be helping us, any grant that we choose to apply for and need their assistance on writing the grant application, that would be included in the grant, in this 20,000.
I, I may be getting it confused. It sounds like I'm paying 20,000 to make myself eligible to ask them for help later on if I secure a grant. Is that kind of the way it works or what?
You're paying the 20,000 to get their assistance for you, to help you apply for a grant.
Yeah.
But then there could be additional costs down the road.
So is, we don't have any in-house staff to focus on grants? Wait, what if we didn't do, didn't seek any grants?
Then you've paid 20,000 and decided not to apply for any.
Wow. Thank you.
But I think it would be anticipated to go after as many grants if, if you would do that. It makes sense to go after as many as, uh, we're about, yeah, you know that.
No, but I would be looking, I would first establish or find out what grants I would be interested in pursuing before I paid 20,000 to make them eligible to help me. Do you have any idea what grants we're gonna be seeking? Anybody?
I do not because we have not previously from finance gone after the grants. The departments themselves kind of go after them. My understanding from Lindsay is, you know, their assistance could be, you know, if a department sees on this database a grant that's available and that this, the council knows that these grants typically go to small municipalities or to larger counties, they could tell us, hey, it's not worth your time to go after this one because this is not typically who they go to. They're, they have that knowledge that we would not have and all, but, and they may be able to tell us when new grants become available as, you know, time goes by, if there's new funds that come down. So, you know, the hope would be potentially that if we participate in it one year, that we learn, that the departments learn kind of where to go and find out grant information and maybe we can step out on our own. But then again, our departments do have limited staff still and very few have a person dedicated just to grants. We are hoping that with our new intern in finance that we can help develop some grant policies and procedures so that the departments, when they get grants, can better manage them. But, you know, time is still out there.
But why would you invest that 20,000 in that?
We could.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
Uh, would there be a person assigned to this, like, I know you had said, I'm trying to figure out the process on like, who would make sure that we're getting the most bang for our buck?
Like I said, I would, I'm hoping to hand this off to the intern to assist the departments once the council comes down and does the presentation to the department heads. And then, um, our new intern would be taking that, Suzie would be taking that and helping the departments continue to use it and make, to make applications if they see grants that are there. But of course, the departments have to take, you know, we need the departments to take initiative.
Yeah.
At the same time, and Suzie can hopefully guide them into that and keep a monitor on that to see if they're checking.
Okay. Because that would be my only thing, is I almost feel like we're almost adding more work on an over, on already overworked ability and then just, I know how quickly the days get away and if someone isn't kind of dedicated to making sure at least the reminders out. So, I don't know.
And that is a concern of mine also is whether or not there is enough staff time to still be involved at the level we need to be involved. I did not get the impression from talking to the council that they will be out there just going, oh, here's a grant for Lee County, that they're gonna take and show us this database and then it's gonna take our initiative somewhat. Now, they may send us reminders, hey, here's a new grant opportunity, but it's gonna still take initiative on our departments or work on our departments to be out there and to seek that information and go out there after them and to say, hey, we want to apply for this one and we need your assistance to write the grant application.
Okay.
Commissioner Connect, questions?
What's your recommendation?
If the board so chooses to participate, I don't think it would hurt for them to participate for one year. We have budgeted it, but just with the understanding that, you know, there is still gonna have to be county involvement on it and there still could be additional dollars that have to be spent if we receive a grant.
Commissioner Lovick?
Has any other counties used them and recommendations from them, how successful they are or, or return on investment or?
Yes, there have been other counties and municipalities that have participated. I believe the number that was in the earlier memo that had gotten through, um, the council showed about the 30 percent, 30 to, close to 40% rate of positivity on grant applications. So in other words, about 30 to 40% of the grant applications they had submitted were successful. And a lot of those have been cities versus counties. And some of that is because some of the grants are housing-type grants or CDBG-type grants, which typically run through your cities more so than your counties. And same thing, there may be some roads, road grants, but we don't do roads. Counties don't do roads, so those are not gonna go to the cities.
So any counties around us that we could talk to that has used them that?
I would, yes, there are some. I would probably need to reach back out and talk to them. I think Durham has participated, um, aren't Durham, Johnston, Lee and Moore all in the same group? I'd have to go back and look at that memo to see if they specified which counties of our group had done, had participated.
That might be something we can talk about Thursday, Friday and Saturday.
Can you speak into the mic? I'm sorry.
That might be something we can talk about Thursday, Friday and Saturday in that conference.
When do you have to know by?
There's no specific timeframe, but the 20,000 covers a fiscal year, so the sooner we go into it, the more opportunity we have to maximize our return.
Okay, so fiscal year being?
Through June 30th of this coming year.
Okay, so where are, we've already technically lost months on it so far.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that a federal fiscal year or a state fiscal year?
It's state fiscal year. Well, it's in, or fiscal year, July 1st through June 30th. Sorry.
Commissioner Carver?
Yeah, I, I've listened to the conversation and I, I've been the, uh, board rep to the council. And, uh, I had a chance to talk to, uh, Elena Keegan, who's in charge of the, uh, in charge of this effort. And I'm wondering if I can just share some information to you because I, I think to some degree, maybe there's some misunderstanding about what motivated the council to do this. First of all, um, you, you know that the federal and state process for accessing these kinds of funds requires this kind of inter, interface with, uh, appealing for grants and funding and stuff like that. And so the council really stepped back and looked at that and saw what the challenge it was to the counties and the municipalities to come up with the kind of insight that it needed. We were, we're talking about the difficulty sometimes with finding time to do these kinds of things on our county staff. They realize that. So they're looking at the fact that really when you start talking about a, uh, a grant, uh, you have to determine your needs. We've already talked about that. Uh, find out if there are funding streams that could help, apply for funding. And if awarded, then there's an administration of the funding, like what you said. Now, I, I had a chance to talk to the manager, uh, last week about this and in the process of, um, kind of thinking about some of the cautions she rightfully had, I went back and, and talked to Elena Keegan, who is the representative over there at the council. And I just want to share a couple of her comments with you first. With respect to the administration afterwards, it, it is true that additional money has to be involved. But through the program, we provide resources and tools to make the administration easier. When a community wants us to fully administrate the grant, we build in usually a 5% into the application. No additional cost to the county. So, uh, Lisa's correct, there is additional money, but we think about that in advance so that the grant itself or the funding would take care of that assistance that the, uh, the council would give us. As far as making recommendations, we do have a person assigned, uh, Lindsay Whittonal, I'm not sure, Whit-
Whitson.
Yeah, she is assigned to Lee County. And what she does is she has assistants to review, um, grants on a regular basis and make recommendations to us based on the input that we've given her. So we do have the responsibility to say, hey, we're interested in these five or six kinds of things. And then over the year, she would look for grants, first of all, at the beginning of the year that are obvious. And then as other opportunities come up, she flagged them and get back to us if in fact it was something that fit in our kind of a scenario. There is a database that we can have access to, but the thinking here is that we know how much difficulty it would be for individual departments to do it, so they're really interested in pushing information to us, not just asking us to look at the database and determine for ourselves. What we do have to do is give them information on where we're interested and then they're free to do it. At the same time, we have access to the database and we can look at it and do whatever extra work we want to do. Uh, Durham County is one of the counties that's in the program and they recently said the following. For our division, there are only one or two grants per year that are relevant. So even though we use some services rarely, it's because the grants come up rarely. But when they do, the team is wonderful and manages almost all of the workload of the applications. That's, that's Durham County. It's interesting to look at some of the stats. Uh, they did a review, this program I think is on its second year, and they looked at 15 local governments and, uh, of those governments that gave information, they said 100% indicated they were satisfied with the program, 92% indicated they were very satisfied. Of the respondents, 100% indicated they are likely or very, very likely to recommend the program to other communities. And the last piece of information, uh, is that $33 million have been requested through this program. Right now, only half of those have people, have, have, they've gotten responses, so that's about $15 million. Of that $15 million, $7 million has been approved. So the success rate is in the neighborhood of 45 to 50%. And my numbers may be just a little bit off there. But, but basically, it's not just a we pull information program from them. They have established this to help us, uh, be able to recognize areas where we might be able to, uh, use their help. Anyway, um, I guess that's a pretty good recommendation and it also answers some of the questions that were brought up.
So did you say that if we apply and get a grant, we can use part of that grant money to administer back to them?
As long as we include it in the request, but the answer is yes. And of course, they're, in order to finance the program for the council, obviously, they look forward to the ability to, uh, be paid, uh, for a grant that's gonna be successful. And it also reduces our workload.
How are we looking at grants right now? How, how, are we or?
Departments, right now, our departments pretty much go out on their own. You've got People and Health Department that apply for grants, Parks and Recreation applies for certain grants. Social Services doesn't do that many grants. Library goes after some grants that are offered through the state and various other organizations. It's pretty much been done on departmental levels. Sheriff's Department has gone out after some on their own. Same thing they're kind of gonna have to do now, except we are, we do have the intern here who's gonna try to come up with policies and procedures, because what we've had happen this year sometimes is the departments may go after the grant, but they don't know all the rules and regulations of the grant until after they get it and then they're scrambling trying to make sure they can meet the reporting requirements of these grants or the spending requirements of these grants. And so that has ended up falling on finance over the past year, who did not, yes, we have Jen Waterhouse, who we brought in to help us with ARPA, but her role has kind of shifted to also be an assistant finance director. And so we, she doesn't have all the time to be able to administer all the grants. Plus, we ended up with those state dollars that came down through the budget last year that were very extensive reporting requirements this time. And so, and have went to agencies outside of our units that we're having to contact, get reports from, follow up with and do all the reporting. We have to do the reporting because the funds pass through us. So it's, um, become quite a burden on the finance staff at this point to keep up with this and to make sure that the departments are doing what they need to do.
So if we pass this tonight and recommend, and they recommend a, a grant, will our people still have to get that information?
Yes, we're still gonna have to provide certain information to the council because, again, they don't know all the ins and outs of Lee County.
Right.
And so, so I mean, they're, yes, they're gonna provide, you know, some assistance to us in the grant writing piece and can review the grant applications and help us get them up to a good level, hopefully, that we would possibly qualify and receive a grant. But it isn't, you know, it's not gonna be, hey, we want to apply for this grant, they do all the work. It is still gonna take time and effort from our staff.
Mr. Chair, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we, we table this, uh, and, uh, let the county manager and staff, uh, reach out to some surrounding counties and, and give me a good solid recommendation on if it's, uh, worth, worth pursuing.
Motion's been made to table. I, I still would like to ask a question. I, I know Beth is not here, but Joseph, could I get you up here, please? I like to nickname you the Grant Master. And, and could, could you give us a little insight on your habits of acquiring grants? Because I know you've gotten a bunch.
Yeah, so there's a handful of Parks and Rec grants, um, and going after them, we typically contact a, um, a engineer firm that can come out and do the site plans. And it's like the, the last one that we got was $412,000. We paid them $5,000 to do a conceptual drawing that we could always use, but also help us put the 700-page grant application together. The one previous to that, we paid, uh, $1,000 for them to put that one together. That one was $209,000. So it's, it's them and staff working together to make the whole grant application come to one, one big piece because there's so many pages with these grants. I, I don't have the time to put 700 pages in a five-inch three, uh, three-ring binder. But with their help, we're able to go out and, and give these grants.
And this company again?
Uh, the last two that we have gone with has been Withers and Ravenel. And I, I try not to go after grants that I don't feel 100% confident about. The last one was the Accessibilities for Parks, which was a brand-new one. So I was a little nervous about that, but I knew that the money that we were spending was gonna be for plans and things that we could use for the park, even if we didn't get the grant. But when you're talking about paying $1,000 to Withers to go and, and write a grant to get you $209,000, it's, it's a good, that's right.
And I know Beth is not here, but I always see the paperwork come across that we usually have in consent agenda that's the library and there, she's like a hawk.
She is. And a lot of theirs are through state aid, so those are probably come through irregardless of who we use. Some of hers are state aid, but she does go after some that are other organizations also. And she's not used anybody to assist with those, but her grants so far have been smaller, but there are some bigger ones I think she's interested in going after.
How about public health and social services?
Public health does do some grants, um, varying sizes. Um, I'm trying to think the most recent. Social services does not do grants per se. Most of their funding is straight through the state. But then also, um, senior services and co- But then also, Senior Services and COLTS also does some grants. Again, a lot of theirs run through the council anyway, because, and sometimes there's a misnomer in what's a grant and what is just regular funding. And it may still say grant on it, but it's unique, it's routine funding from year to year, like a lot of the funding for COLTS or some of the other programs that Debbie has, like there's a Senior Services grant that is a competitive grant that she applies for, but she does that in-house with the staff she has, but that's a part of their regular function. Now, to go after other grants would be more time-consuming for them, but they're always looking and checking what's available and what's coming down. But, you know, there, there could be additional funds, and that's the one thing with this, that some of the ARPA funds or some of the other bills that may be coming out of the Senate and stuff may be applicable, and the, the group may be able to bring those to our attention that we may not be catching. But I will check with some of the groups that are involved in with Lindsay to see if, like Parks and Rec grants, if those are included in this, or if that's not a specialty they're getting into. If, you know, Withers and Ravenel are the type that are putting reports together and those grants together, they may not have the specialty at the Pines Regional Council to do those. But I can find out more information for you based on what you've asked.
Any questions of Joseph? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Can I make an observation? If you look at the investment, there are fifteen of the municipalities and counties of the forty-seven in the council that are on the program. Now, if you make a rough estimate of them all paying twenty thousand, it's, it varies depending on the size of the county, that's three hundred thousand dollars. How much have they gotten back? Seven million. So when you look at the investment in these counties as opposed to the return, it looks pretty good. Fifteen times twenty thousand is three hundred thousand.
Okay. The motion to table for staff to further research question, point?
You asked for some more information, didn't you? You did, you asked, you said, check on some, what did you, what did you ask for? I'm sorry. He asked.
Yeah. You asked that we talk to some of the counties that are participating. He mentioned possibly talking to some people at the NCACCC conference this week.
I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
All right. The motion to table for staff to further research, any further discussion? All those in?
Is this table, I'm sorry, is this table for next, next, is, did you, is this motion tabled for our next meeting?
It's tabled for whenever they find, they figure out something. It can be for the next meeting if, if the information we need gets found.
I didn't know there was need for clarification.
Could I make a comment? I, I really like to vote in favor of this thing, and I have to be gone next meeting, and since I'm the person that probably motivated it, I would appreciate you tabling it at least until October.
Do you wish to modify your?
And I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, all right. So table for staff to further research until October?
Second.
Second?
It's the next, oh, it's the first October.
October second meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of tabling until second October, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Very nice. All right, managers' report, strategic plan report out. The strategic planner is moving. You have it in front of you? County Clerk Haley Hall. Clerk of the Commission.
Sorry. Good evening, commissioners. Yes, we have the quarter three strategic plan report out for you at your seats tonight. For the sake of time, I won't go through every single item, but I would like to note that we do have, we have made progress in all six of our key areas, which is wonderful. And I'm happy to answer any questions about it now or after you've had a chance to read it.
Any questions of Haley? Commissioner Sharp?
No, thank you for your hard work on this.
Commissioner Reeves?
No questions.
Commissioner Borbick?
No, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
Again, just to comment, thank you so much. I think this is the first time we've had a strategic plan that we keep getting updates on, so thank you.
It's definitely a team effort.
Go team.
Thank you, Tim.
Commissioner Carver?
Not right now.
Thank you, Haley. Next item on the agenda is monthly financial reports, Mrs. Zeissman.
Good evening. The July twenty twenty-three monthly financial report is attached to your agenda for your review. The targeted expenditures for this point in the fiscal year is eight point three three percent. There are several departments that are over this target due to the inclusion of encumbrances. However, if you exclude those encumbrances, a few departments remain, and that is due to the payment of annual insurance premiums. The May twenty twenty-three sales tax report is also attached. Sales tax revenues are seven point six eight percent above the same period last fiscal year. And as a reminder, sales tax revenues do run three months behind.
Questions from Mrs. Zeissman. Commissioner Carver?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Borbick?
No, sir.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
No questions, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, before I leave this evening, I wanted to introduce our lead for NC fellow, Suzie Brito-Lagunas. She's going to be here with us for a year. Suzie, who introduced you?
Good evening, commissioners. I am Suzie Brito-Lagunas, the AmeriCorp Local Government Fellow through Lead for North Carolina. I recently graduated from the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, and with the long-term goal of attending law school, I knew I wanted to take a gap year before. And when the opportunity arose for me to be able to come back to my home county of Lee County, I immediately jumped on the opportunity, and I am immensely grateful to be here for a year and for all the departments that have really brought me in, and especially the Finance Department. So I am thankful for this opportunity.
Welcome. Thank you, welcome, and we hope you'll continue on in financial law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. County managers' monthly report.
Okay, just a few updates on some different capital projects and a few other things. The more training facility, as you know, we are working on installing the skimmer system there. We do have, have received a draft permit for, from the Department of Environmental Quality. They have opened the comment period as of August sixth on that, and that will end September twentieth. There will be a public hearing on September fourteenth at ten a.m. in the McSwain Extension Education Agriculture Center Auditorium. The permit may be issued on September twentieth if there have been no comments received. If comments are received, that may slow that down just a little bit. On the multi-sports complex, we are out to bid, and bids should be in August twenty-ninth, so we're anxiously waiting for that. So we hope to have on the September agenda the bid award, and as you heard earlier, we'll be moving ahead with the bond sale, the general obligation bond sales. On the Horton Pool, I'm going to ask Joseph to come up and start the, the information on that, and then Jennifer will follow up with some other information on that project.
Thank you, Ms. Mentor. So we had a very productive meeting today at Horton. We have invited Environmental Health out to do a preliminary check, and we have really got the punch list of items down. So we are anticipating a ribbon cutting on September eighth, and opening up the eighth, the ninth, the tenth, and the sixteenth and the seventeenth, which Carolina Pool Management would be bringing the lifeguards in, and again, on that, on that ribbon-cutting day, doing something around three-thirty, try to capture those kids that are getting out of school.
Just for your information, we will not be announcing the details or, you know, to the public until we have passed environmental health inspection. We're still working through that. They should, they, they've called it in, we're just get, waiting to get the actual schedule from Environmental Health, so we're hopeful that that's going to get through inspection. However, there, there's a few smaller outstanding issues that we continue to work through. This project has really taken all hands on tech between Parks and Rec Development Services and General Services to see every component of this project through and constantly monitor every little detail. But, so stay tuned for those, those announcements. Right now, we're just kind of penciling it in as a preliminary, but if we hit any major snags, we will certainly send that information out to, to you, but we're, we're shooting for the September eighth Friday after schooltime about three-thirty, and we'll get that announcement to the public as soon as we get through that inspection. Another component of that, so typically with Carolina Pool Management, part of their fee encompasses the revenues that are collected from the pools. That includes the gate fees and lesson fees and facility rental fees. You know, because, you know, this facility is going to be available with such a limited amount of time to the public, you know, I think to maximize the enjoyment to the public, we're proposing that the board consider offering this facility to the public free of entry for those two weekends. So we would like to ask that the board consider taking action this evening to waive the gate fee for those two weekends, and we'll make sure that we negotiate Carolina Pool Management's cost in consideration of that, of that waiver if the board is so inclined.
Do I have a motion to that effect?
So move.
Motion's been made to waive the fees for public, I guess, public attendance at the Horton Pool for the remaining two weekends, and that we will compensate Carolina Pools or Carolina?
Carolina Pool Management.
Cool, Pool Management, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Also, we're moving ahead with the playground equipment and bathroom installation and shelter installation at Temple Park. Quonix Children's Park is, they're still working with Withers-Ravenel to provide the bid documents. Library, we're about eighty-five percent on the drawings review for that project, and we're continuing to work on the sewer line extension to the park. So there will be an update for the Board of Trustees and the Board of Commissioners on, at the September eighteenth meeting. Historic Courthouse, as you can see, is still moving forward. We have an August twenty-fourth deadline on that grant, so we will be needing to get moving pretty quick on that one. We do have the jail feasibility study requests for proposals did come in and closed on August eleventh. Staff is reviewing those, and we'll be coming to you with a recommendation on, at the September eighteenth meeting. We are also out to bid on the comprehensive fire services study for our volunteer fire departments and our long-range plan, so that'll be coming to you eventually after those bids are received September eighth. It will probably be October before those are reviewed and a recommendation made to you. I have asked Whitney to go over an update from some pre-trial information, or pre-trial department?
Yes. So on July twentieth of twenty twenty-three, we did have another roundtable discussion with individuals who work with justice-involved in the community, Commissioner Carver and Commissioner Smith were present. As you all are aware, we have in this fiscal year been able to hire Judicial Services Coordinator who's been able to help with pre-trial and expand the pre-trial services coordination. Traditionally, the supervised pre-trial caseloads average seventeen clients, and with the implementation of the Judicial Services Coordinator, there's been an increase, an ability to increase that to an average caseload of twenty-six units, I mean, clients, excuse me. And there has also been, the board was, had allowed us to implement new GPS units, and so those have increased from three to seven, which we maintain out the majority of the time in, in all use. Also, with the Judicial Services Coordinator, we've been able to expand the services. The position is active in reentry discussions, as well as, one thing you'll continue to hear, is the housing instability that a lot of the people find themselves in, involved with Lee County. And that's not just in Lee County, that's across the state. When the position was brought on, they did some cross-training, and then in the last five months, the coordinator has been able to respond to eighty-six requests for services from inmates in the jail. Twenty-seven of those were related to substance abuse and mental health treatment, thirteen for food, ten for housing, seven for transportation, four for medical, two employment, and then twenty-six for other. That may have included inquiries regarding attorney appointment, court dates, or just other concerns from inside the detention center. And as you are also aware, after tonight, the department is going to be looking for the social worker position to fill just to continue to add to expanding those services. And we have been extremely grateful for the board's support in involving that.
Thank you, Whitney.
Thank you.
Also, I want to acknowledge, I know this list has left, but I wanted to acknowledge the library and their very successful PopCon event that they had this weekend. I understand the attendance was outstanding again this year. They had a beautiful day for it, and I want to acknowledge their staff and their volunteers for all their hard work. You also have various reports listed there that are attached. Just a reminder that Thursday, Friday, and Saturday is the annual conference for the NCACCC group, and we will be in Wake County attending that with several of the commissioners. Our next board meeting will be September eighteenth here at the Civic Center, and then we will be back to our regular schedule of two meetings in October, with the first being October second at the McSwain Center, and the October sixteenth at the, back here at the Civic Center. And that is everything I believe I have for tonight.
Any questions for the manager?
I've got one. I'd like to know, what did they, the library fundraiser, how much did they, have they?
For the PopCon?
Yes.
I have not heard those numbers. I will get that to you all those soon as I can.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, because we're going to go into closed session here, we'll go ahead and go with Commissioner comments, starting with Commissioner Carver.
I just want to echo what the manager said about the PopCon. I had a chance to go over there, saw all sorts of costumes and stuff, or a lot of, lot of smiling faces. It was a great event. The other thing I would like to mention is that we, we had in the consent agenda, this issue that Whitney talked about with the community social, social worker, that's one of several issues that she mentioned that came out of an effort last year to look at justice-involved people, and it's extended beyond that now. But I, I just am particularly thankful for Angelina's and Whitney's and Autumn Smith's effort to draw together, do research, and find out the best way to approach the issue with the social worker. It takes a lot of effort behind the scenes, and I just appreciate the effort they've made. That's all, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate the Finance Department, twenty-seven years in a row. Am I right on that number, twenty-seven? So thank you for that. Congratulations again to the Lee County, Jim, the Jim Nastic group of ladies that represent our county, I think, very well. Ben, thankful for the hard work, and yours, each other person in the staff that you didn't get to come up here tonight, thank you for that, too. But like I say, to each and every one that works so hard, I want to personally say thank you, and I thank this board, thanks you all, so, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Borbick?
I just want to say thank you again for all the work that you guys have put in. Looking forward to what we can learn, what, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and bring back to Lee County as we continue to try and, I think, like Emma said, you, you leave a place better than when you came, and so I think each time we take an opportunity to be able to expand our knowledge and our growth and our network, we do that, so I'm excited.
Commissioner Reeves?
Yes, I'd like to thank whoever gave me this North Carolina map. I get so damn tired of arguing with GPS, I don't know what to do.
You ain't going nowhere.
Now I won't get lost. Thank you. Oh, boy.
Commissioner Sharp?
No, I'm excited that we're out to bid on the sports complex and, and looking forward to moving along as well with the library, excited about both, so.
And if I can add, those maps came from the TarPO meeting we had last week, and I thought that everybody would like, well, I appreciate that, Commissioner Reeves, and sometimes that gizmo doesn't always work when you need it to. This week, the North Carolina Association of
moving along as well with the library, excited about both.
And if I can add, those maps came from the TarPO meeting we had last week, and I thought that everybody would like, well, I appreciate that, Commissioner Reeves. And sometimes that gizmo doesn't always work when you need it to. This week, the North Carolina Association County Commission's Annual Conference, and if you're interested, I will be convening a session on Friday afternoon, so get with me and I'll let you know which one it is. I did have the opportunity to sit in a training room with the manager and with Candace Seismen regarding our Moody's and Standard and Poor's credit briefings. Well, let me tell you something, it was what, good six hours? It was fun. It was never a dull moment. Adding on to that, I just wanted to let you know that, been watching the school board meetings, and I'm here to tell you, their attorney stood in front of the school board a couple meetings ago, basically went over the state statutes, and believe it or not, counties are supposed to have an ad hoc committee with their finance and their CIP annual preparations months in advance. And as long as I've been on this board, and I think most of the commissioners have been on this board, just know that the school board delivers their budget on the 15th of May with no input from, you know, a working relationship with the county commission as well as the school board. So we are now establishing regular meetings, the manager and I, with the school board chair and the interim superintendent, and we've put together, we've submitted names for the ad hoc budget committee, and they will be starting here shortly for the 2024-25 school budget and the school capital improvements plan. So we're moving forward in that, and I noticed when we went to the strategic plan that we kind of need to emphasize that we're working diligently with the school board moving forward. On top of that, I did send a report to all of you that both Commissioner Carver and I attended the school board's, excuse me, the school bus garage, and unfortunately, the facility is in poor, poor state, and we're going to be looking at that as another item on their CIP down the road. But that's going to be, that's going to need improving and upgrading, so. I have nothing further. If the vice chair would be so kind to read the motion?
I move that we go into closed session per NC statute 14331811A, to consider qualification, competence performance, or condition of appointment of public officer or employee or prospective public office or employee.
Motion's been made to go into closed session regarding personnel actions. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now in closed session. Can we take five minutes?
Please.[165.23]